I'll call the meeting to order. Remind you to everyone who is here that this meeting is being digitally recorded, so please be respectful of each other when speaking and also when listening to someone else. Is there anyone here for open session? Okay, we'll move to report announcements.
All right, so we have a few things coming up. We have November 26th, we have the annual tree lighting, starting at 5:00. So at 5:00 to 5:30, we're going to be joined by the Greens and the swinging singing seniors singing Christmas carols over on the Common. We will have hot cocoa and probably some cookies for everyone to share. And there's going to be a special appearance from Santa, who always, always makes an appearance and is jolly. And we will turn on all the lights for the Common to kick off the tis the season, basically, the holiday season. We're going to light up the menorah and all the trees and the Christmas tree, of course, and all the deer. And it will be fun. And that starts, again, this coming up Sunday, November 26th, excuse me, November 26th, at 5:00. November 27th is the deadline for the light fight, so please get your applications in for the light fight. It's super fun. There's three categories to enter in. There's the traditional classic, there's the go big or stay home, and then there's the business category. It's a good thing for our town to have people come in and drive around, and you can vote for your favorites. The actual light fight itself, the first three weekends of December, Friday, Saturday, Sunday, from 5:00 to 9:00 each night. You can follow the map. We have an online map, or we have a listing with a paper map, which is always fun to follow. That will be available down at Mr. Mike's or on the town website. And then you can vote for your favorites, and people will get to win fun prizes. But it's a nice thing to do, drive around with your kids or your grandkids or your spouse that you like, whatever, in the car and go see a bunch of festive Christmas lights. And again, that is the first three weekends of December. On December 2nd, there are two fairs going on. There's a Christmas fair over here at the seniors from 9:00 to 3:00, and there's also at the church across the street, the gingerbread fair. So definitely stop in and check out both of those. Again, that's December 2nd, starting at 9:00 in the morning. On December 9th, we have brunch with Santa over at the Hubbardston Center School, 10 to noon. Again, it's the real Santa. He always shows up. And he's got a nice beard. And that will be, we ask for a $10 donation to come in. There will be some light snacks. The kids get to do some crafts, and you can take as many pictures as you'd like with Santa. It's a, it's a nice time. We do a very good backdrop over there. And it's just meant to be fun and a good family event rather than standing in line waiting to take pictures at the mall, which nobody does anymore because it's gross. Anyway, the next place Santa will be.
There's a question. Do you have the Lions Club Santa?
I'm getting there. Let me go down the list, sir. I got it, yes. So on December 10th, in case you missed that Santa, December 10th, Santa will be going around on the fire truck. This one's a fundraiser for the fire department, and I'm going to read it, so make sure it's a one-day-only. Basically, gifts should be wrapped and labeled, as always. Drop off your gift at Station 2 anytime before the 10th. They're trying to fit it all in one day, so basically it's going to be a very quick meeting, but they'll go around town depending on where you are in town. They'll give you a window. $10 donation, and it goes to the Firefighters Association. It's a, it would be appreciated if it's not necessary. But yeah, so if you want to sign up for that, you can either message the fire department on Facebook, or you can email hubbardstonfire@gmail.com. So it's a second time for Santa, and those are both the same weekend. And then there is a third time, in case you miss all that Santa, the Lions are having on December 16th, Take Picture with Santa, up at the bandstand from 4:30 to 6:30. Again, that's December 16th, and it is the real Santa, again. And they'll be handing out, I believe, coloring books and things like that. So you have plenty of chances for fun festivities in Hubbardston for the month of December, and I hope that is it.
It's a lot of Santa.
Yeah, it's a lot of Santa. Christmas fun.
Good luck.
I know. No, I know, you're not all the Santas, but you're the real Santa. So anyway, all right, thank you.
Thank you. Any comments or questions from anyone? Thanks, Katie. All right, we will now go to the public hearing. I would welcome the board, members of the Board of Assessors and representatives from the Regional Resource Group. We appreciate you coming here today, and hopefully the discussion will be productive. Is Chairman Prentice, would you call your meeting to order, please?
Make a motion to call a meeting to order.
Second.
Is that, okay, so, and who's the representative from the Regional Resource Group who's going to speak on the matter?
I am.
Okay. Robert. Would you introduce yourself and come and join us if you want?
Yeah, absolutely.
Those who do not have the paper in front of them will be following along on the screen.
All right. Hi, everyone. Good evening. My name's Robert Heffin. I'm the Associate Assessor for Regional Resource Group, and we are contracted by the Town of Hubbardston, and we're here for the tax classification hearing. This is my first time doing this by myself in Hubbardston, but I was here for the last one, too, so it should be pretty status quo. And I'll walk you through this whole packet that we have going on here and explain what we need to as we go. So to start on page two, I'm going to read along as I go through this and then just add in comments here and there. And then there's going to be a lot of figures being put out there, so if anyone has any questions on those, we can establish that. So, introduction, prior to the mailing of third-quarter tax billings, the Hubbardston Select Board holds a public hearing to determine the percentage of the town's property tax levy to be borne by each major property class. This responsibility and procedure are described in Chapter 40, Section 56 of the Massachusetts General Laws. The budgetary and assessment steps leading to the classification hearing are summarized below. Also provided is information about the town's levy, property assessments, and recommendations made by the Board of Assessors. So this next section is steps in setting tax rates. We currently, as of this meeting, are on step four, which is four, five, and six. So we're doing a classification here in presentation, determining tax shift options and voting on a tax shift factor, which is the point of this aspect of the meeting tonight. So to go over some brief terminology and figures here, following your definitions of terms frequently used in the discussion of tax rates. So the levy, the tax levy or levy, in simpler terms, is the amount of property taxes to be raised. Levy amount is determined by the budget, and the total amount of the approved budget less revenues from other sources like motor vehicle excise, municipal fees, state aid is the amount to be raised for property taxation. So in Hubbardston, the levy to be raised for fiscal '24 is estimated to be $8,425,715, which is an increase of $371,717, or 4.62% over last year's fiscal, over last fiscal year's levy of $8,53,998. That's a pretty modest amount in general, as far as this town goes in comparison to others in the area. The levy ceiling is 2.5% of the full value of the town. So based on the Hubbardston town valuation, total for fiscal '24 of $713,439,021, the town cannot levy taxes in excess of $17,835,976. This is a theoretical amount. This number is typically never reached in most towns. This would accommodate for things like debt, large, large amounts of debt overrides, those, those types of things. New growth revenue is some really good news for this year. Property tax, new growth is property taxes derived from newly taxable properties, like new construction, additions, renovations, subdivisions, and personal property. We have tabulated and certified with the Department of Revenue that our new growth revenue in total is $108,628. In addition, there's an amended new growth in the amount of $30,776. This is statistically a very high amount of new growth in comparison to what we typically have, which we were, which is a reflection of the Town of Hubbardston in general of new construction that's going in, new businesses, personal property. There's definitely some growth, in particular on the residential side of, side of this that we're able to pick up on, and in turn snack some new growth. The levy limit, also referred to as the maximum allowable levy, is calculated by adding the 2.5% of the previous year's levy limit plus the new growth revenue for the present fiscal year to last year's levy limit. Exceeding the levy limit would require to override a Proposition 2.5 for fiscal year 2024. The maximum allowable levy limit would be $8,431,747. Sorry if I'm going too fast. Is this an okay pace for everyone so far? Okay. Excess levy capacity, this is unappropriated funds. You would need to tap into the override to access these funds is the difference between the levy and the levy limit, which excess levy capacity currently is $6,032. So at the bottom of page three, fiscal year 2024 levy limit and amount to be raised, these are just some more of the figures that I just went over, so it's just a brief synopsis of those to kind of outline without the definitions. Moving on to page four, this is a copy, and really interesting to get a good view of what's going on with the town and how these figures are distributed, is the LA 4, which is a classification report that we upload information into for the Department of Revenue so that they can approve these figures. So this will outline parcel counts and their classifications and the amount of assessed value that they're all contributing based off category for the town. Below that, we have the evaluations by class before tax shift, which just gives some more breakdown of valuation and the percent compared to the prior year and the amount of change with a percentage amount there. So Hubbardston, as it stands currently, is 93.67% residential and commercial, CIP, which is commercial, industrial, and personal property, which are grouped together, make up for 6.33% of the total assessed value of the town. So the only one that we had a larger, so we had fairly mild growth in all of the categories aside from personal property, which there's just more going on in that sector that, that there was more growth on in comparison to others. And then...
Good question.
Yeah?
What's the difference between commercial and industrial?
So industrial can be things like cellphone towers. It's not, commercial's more like, you know, brick and mortar businesses, where industrial could be more, yes, cell towers, gas, oil, more companies that have that type of focus. Mass Electric, for example, I'm not positive if that's a Hubbardston one, but that's an example of something that would fall into that, aside from pizza place.
Okay.
Yep. So next we have shifting the tax burden. So we like to include this one in to give municipalities an idea of how it would work if we were to have a tax shift. So municipalities with larger commercial and industrial tax bases often see a tax shift burden to help maintain lower residential taxes. This is typically in towns that you would see with, you know, at least 25% CIP. Hubbardston is like a lot of other small towns in the area and has in the past not chosen to shift taxes. It's really important to know that a shift does not necessarily create more revenue for the town, it just changes the slice of the pie. So it's not, to adjust the tax rate does not create more revenue or add taxes or lessen them, it just divides up the who is paying what in amount of taxes between residents and between the commercial, industrial, and personal property groups.
So, may I ask a question?
Yeah.
So basically, what you're saying is if we did commercial property taxes, you're residential, you'd be getting more from commercial than residential, and it would still be the same number at the end? Is that what you're telling me?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, it just divides up who's paying more of the pie.
Yeah.
So the little portion that we have under here, this table, so I calculated that if, if we were to maintain the same tax amount that the average residential family is paying in Hubbardston, we would need to move to a CIP shift of 41%, 41% on the industrial side. So that would in turn raise the commercial, industrial, and personal property tax rate to $16.63 per thousand.
Which is not terrible. Which is not terrible, I'm just saying.
It, in theory, if you were to do that, it would have to be based off which commercial properties you're looking at, but on an average, it would add about $3,000 in extra taxes for each business, which this also includes chapter land, so this is talking about farmers as well.
Yeah, okay.
So, tax rates, the proposed tax rate right now, based off the values we have to maintain the limit, it would be $11.79, which is $1.24 less than we had last year, which was $13.03. Just want to point out that this is an estimate. These, that figure still does need to be approved by the Department of Revenue, but that's what we're presenting, and that's what we're getting approved on as of, as of yet. So moving on, in conclusion, the tax impacts for this. So overall, the fiscal '24 average single-family valuation for Hubbardston right now would be $403,232, at a tax rate of $11.79 per thousand. That puts it at $4,754 for the year, as opposed to last year, which was $354,932, with at $13.03 per thousand, $4,624. So $48,300 increase in taxes, which is 13.61%, modest in comparison to a lot of other places in central Mass at the moment. And in turn, that only adds $130 on average for the single-family residents in taxes throughout the year, which equates to about a third of a cent a day.
Single family with a valuation of $403.
So I do want to say, so in other words, just so everybody's clear, we are drop, this is dropping the tax rate, but because everyone's evaluation has gone up.
Yes.
It's gonna make more taxes. We are not raising your taxes. The value of your home has gone up, we are actually dropping the tax rate. I'm saying it because we get this every year, and we have to re-explain it.
Yeah.
So I want to make it very clear, we are going to, this proposal drops the tax rate, but your house is worth more, that's why your taxes are more.
Yes.
Okay.
Yep, it's always an ebb and...
Everybody heard it.
It's always an ebb and flow in that way. So if the tax rate drops.
Yes.
Assessment's up, sometimes when you'll see it, you know, when the tax rate goes up, the assessment typically will drop down. It's not something you see often, especially considering this market that we're in. And all these figures are a reflection of that directly from the Department of Revenue. So if anyone has any questions, we can do that. Otherwise, the board and I recommend that the Select Board adopt a residential shift factor of 1.000, with a corresponding commercial, industrial, and personal property factor of 1.000, thereby maintaining the relative shares of overall tax burden borne by the residential property owners over the years.
Is anyone who has any questions or...
There's also a public hearing portion.
Right.
Want to speak?
Anybody want to speak?
Apparently not.
Okay. So we would first close the...
So in order to officially vote for the tax hearing on this last section, voting a tax shift factor, this is the verbiage that we need the board to repeat.
Okay, do we have to close the public hearing first, though?
So there's no one that wanted to speak as part of the tax class hearing process?
Oh, okay. Francois, prevent.
I would like to ask RRG as to whether or not they have, as a matter of fact, performed a true valuation of every property here in the Town of Hubbardston as a result of the work that they're doing and the, and the valuation that is coming in for the, for the upcoming fiscal year.
So there's no way for us to do this over every single property, and that's based off what the Department of Revenue, Revenue does, that's not based off we choose to do or what the board chooses to do. The way that these valuations are established are based off sales from two years prior that the Department of Revenue, that we gather to present to the Department of Revenue. So sales are always, sorry, assessments are always based off sales from two years prior so that we have a good set of data to go by. And what they require from us is what's called an assessment-to-sale ratio. So the reason why we see increases, increases like this, and it's good to point out, too, that these are increases that happen when you're not adding on garages or pools or building new homes, is they require us to be within 10% of their assessment-to-sale ratio. We need to hit those, those figures. So when we look at the sales and we're able to put together a large enough dataset based off this, we have to determine, are there any outliers, or do our figures match what they require for us based off what we need to, to do to move forward for the year to close things out? So with that being said, every five years, we're required, the Department of Revenue requires us to do a recertification. So in that recertification, they really take a deep dive on us to make sure that, it's basically an audit, to make sure that everything's on point, there's no outlying properties. They're looking into ones that might have something interesting that they're flagging that we might not be able to catch on, on the daily. And that also requires all properties to have been at least visited within the past 10 years. So that's where they really bear down on us. We have one coming up for this next year, that's going to be our recertification year. And in turn, we did a lot of extra this year in preliminary preparation to get us in better shape next year so that we don't get caught with any issue, potential issues that we might not be prepared for. So we have been working on that, and it's a mixture of what the Department of Revenue requires us to do and what we can do on our own based off of the years, the year requirements that, that we have to get these things done.
And Francois?
The information that you have just provided, I'm assuming that that is available to individuals who are interested in pursuing that further, either through RRD or through the Board of Assessors?
Yes.
Okay. And that would be then formally sent to you via a public information request, or how would that be done?
Yeah. It's linked to the slide board meeting calendar, and I will send out a email tomorrow talking about this event.
I, I clearly appreciate that. And by the way, I did identify myself, Transferriger 65 Fieldville Road, I apologize for the...
Thank you.
One additional point I did want to make is, is there's been a clear, significant decrease in the tax rate this year, obviously from 1303 to some, to the proposed 1179. There is a significant increase in the valuation that has to be proportional in order to be able to maintain and manage the accounts for the accountability. I have to therefore assume that there must be some factor that is evaluated when it comes to the total sell, sales of property, and not only that, but in terms of the actual valuation of properties that exist here in the Town of Hubbardston. And that's why this request is coming up. Thank you.
Thank you, Francois. Anyone else have any comment or question? Anyone on the board? Seeing none, before we can do anything else, we should close, have to close. We'd like a motion to close the public hearing.
I'd like to make a motion to close the public hearing.
Motion's made, is there a second?
Second.
And second, any questions, discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Yes.
Yes, opposed?
Oh, oh, for the closing, yes.
Yeah.
Sorry.
Again, all in favor?
I'm just...
I...
Opposed, the motion passed. The meeting, the public hearing is closed.
You have the chairman close their meeting.
Mm-hmm. Oh, yes.
Make your motion to close the assessment meeting.
Second.
Motion made, second, all in favor?
Yeah.
Thank you very much. All right, so now...
Would you like me to read this?
Yes, please.
Okay. I'd like to make a motion. The Hubbardston Select Board votes in accordance with MGL Chapter 40, Section 56, as amended, the percentage of the local tax levy, which will be borne by each class of real and personal property relative to setting the financial year 2024 tax rate and set the residential factor at 1,000, with a corresponding CIP shift of 1.000. Pending certification of the town's annual tax recap by the Massachusetts Department of Revenue.
Thank you. Motion's made, is there a second?
Can we go over the motion again, and was read in correctly?
I read it in correctly, what did I screw up?
Residential factor of 1,000, you said.
Yep.
It's 1.000 on my sheet.
No, residential fact, oh, I'm sorry, I did, I apologize. Jesus, maybe I should get those glasses. Sorry, let me try that again, thank you, Chris. I apologize. All right, let me try that again. I will reread it correctly this time. I would like to make a motion, the Select Board, the Hubbardston Select Board votes in accordance with MGL Chapter 40, Section 56, as amended, the percentage of the local tax levy, which will be borne by each class of real and personal property relative to setting the fiscal year 2024 tax rates and set the residential factor at 1.000, with a corresponding CIP shift of 1.000. Pending certification of the town's annual tax recap by the Massachusetts Department of Revenue. Here we go.
Thank you. Now, motion's made, is there a second?
Second.
Motion made, and second, any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
No.
Yes? Opposed? Motion carried. We also need to have a motion for the single tax rate at this point.
Nope, that was it.
That's it?
Nope, that was the whole thing.
I took it all in. Okay, good.
I hadn't had that information when we met.
Sorry, not a problem. So, thank you very much, we appreciate being here. Well, wait a minute while people are exiting.
Thank you, guys, try to save.
Yeah. Have a good night. Okay, welcome to the Emergency Management Director, Judy, if you want to come up and join us and make your presentation. Thank you very much.
Each year, I try and come and just give you a little update on what's happening in the world of emergency management. And two years ago, I brought in the plan for response, so when the actual event is happening, then we had that plan. And then last year, I brought in a book with scenarios about looking at the different risks that potentially could hit Hubbardston, from cybersecurity to tornadoes, fires, you know. So this year, I took a class on emergency management, and actually, I've taken two classes on just being an emergency manager. And I also took a class on the science of disaster. I have another class coming up on how to set up an emergency operations center, and another class on hazards. And then what I found out is that there is a program available in Massachusetts for getting a certification as an emergency manager. And I did, when I took a look at it, I realized I had 80% of it done. So that's what my hope is, next spring, I'll have it all done, and I'll have the certification. So in the meantime, one of the things that I found, and this is town copy, is a guide for officials like yourself.
Close. She's getting it. Oh, okay. That's the official. Thank you. All right. Thank you. One more. Thank you.
Yeah, I have an extra here, too. And what I've given you is one of the appendixes that's in that book, and it's, what's really nifty about it is the fact that it's a checklist. I like checklists much better than narrative. So if something should happen, you know, forget it, God forbid, another ice storm like back in 2008, we all lived that one day after day, so when December 12th comes around, we all just watch the day, hope it goes away. But it's all right here, the whole checklist, it takes walks you right through, you know, pre, and then during, and then post, and recovery. So it's a handy little checklist. So if I can find more things like that, you know, we'll be in good stead. And also, I've also found this as well. Thank you. This is just a nice little list, and I talked to the Emergency Management Committee, which happens to be Travis, and then the chief, the fire chief, and the police chief, Chairman of the Board of Health. I've talked to a couple CERT members, and I have one that may be interested in coming on, and, but if anybody wants to... But if anybody wants to join, that'd be great. So as a, because we still have a slot for open to residents. But the idea is to take a look at our risks and just kind of follow the list all the way through. And if we follow the list as it's set up, starting with looking at our risks, then, and when then we keep working through it, we could, eventually we will have a complete emergency management plan, called a STEM. And if we have the STEM, then that will open some doors for some grants and things like that. One of the first things that you need in order to get MEMA grants is you need to have a hazard mitigation plan in place. And although we could go for, we could go for the grants, it's a lot of work and you want to make sure all your ducks are in row. So my plan is to try to put together hazard mitigation plan and put that together over the next, the winter and spring. And then, then the next, next year, when this big grant comes by, is called BRIC, and what it does, B-R-I-C, and don't ask me what the initials stand for. But anyway, it's trying to help the town build up their capacity, build up their capabilities to respond to an event. So to become a whole, whole community, a whole resilient community, so that the community is inclusive, aware of all of its residents and their needs, and so create a plan that's for the whole community and builds a resilient community. Those are the buzzwords of the year. So the BRIC is fairly complicated and that's why I thought, I wanted to get the hazard mitigation plan in place first. And then that will set us up nicely to go after the BRIC. Now, one of the components that's in the BRIC, interestingly enough, is you can get, you can not ask for money to get a generator, which we've talked about for how many decades? So, you know, so that would be great if we could word it, do the wordsmith to be able to get the, ask for generators, so seventy-five, twenty-five. So the grant would pay for seventy-five and then the town needs to come up with the other twenty-five. So there's, I need to look into it more so I understand all the details, because the last thing you want is caught in the corner, right? So there's also EMPG grant out. EMPG, which I just put together over the weekend. It's a very simple one, it's the one that Dennis would go for every single year and that's basically provides for some purchase of equipment, a replacement of equipment. One of the pieces in it is for planning, so I'm hoping that we can get that, and then if we have any expenses, or we need to get a consultant to come in and help us or something like that, then that money would be available through this EMPG, Emergency Management Program Grant. And then the last one that I've been looking at is, I'm waiting for it to open up, it hasn't come through yet, they keep saying, oh, it's coming, it's coming, it's coming, we've said that now for two months. And that's the CCP grant, and that's actually funds for the CERT program. And I've been meeting with a few of the CERT members, there's about six that are pretty active, and they kind of all agreed to become the executive committee for the CERT team. And they're, so they're going to be looking at, trying to restart the CERT program here. And we're offering training and offering new training for new recruits. And also do maybe possibly setting up regional training, joining with other CERTs. We did that once here in Hubbardston, and now their, other towns are doing it, they call it rodeo, but it's just really inviting all the other CERT teams to come and then you spend, you know, you have a six to eight hour day filled with all kinds of activities and things like that. So it does get, there is some cost to doing something like that. So that's where we're at for emergency management for the last year. Well, I've been, I was out of it, tired of it, and Dennis was carrying it, now I'm picked up.
Been busy, yeah.
Great.
I have just a generic question in terms of the things you've provided with us and all the things that you're saying need to be taken care of. Is this pretty much generic for all municipalities regardless of size, as opposed to a small town like us and let's say a city like Gardner? All of these are all?
All of those should be.
To handle all aspects, whether it's a small town or not? So they don't have anything special for the smaller communities and any land area as well?
And that keeps being at the emergency management meetings that I've been at, as well as the trainings that I've been at, it's been brought up a lot about the fact that, you know, you have to really consider the rural, because a lot of plans, like they come down and in the way they're written is for places like Boston.
Right, that's why, I was just curious.
So they have been, MEMA has been looking at all the templates and all the forms and even the grants have been looking at it. And they do recognize that they need to, that it's too much for a little town like us. So they're working on it, but I haven't seen the forms yet, so I just have to go by their word that they're working on it.
Thank you, appreciate that.
Just to speak to a little bit of what's been going on on our end is Judy has gone above and beyond to fill the rather large shoes of Dennis in this department. And it's been really awesome to watch her really sink her teeth into it and go and get all of this additional training. It's also been phenomenal, the relationship we're building with our brand new MEMA representative, Ray. He just stops by sometimes and will reach out out of the blue. And that's not something I'm used to seeing in a emergency management professional, but it's happy, I'm happy to see it, which he's been working with Judy and myself, and he seems like it's going to be a good relationship. So I'm happy Judy came here this evening to provide that update.
Yeah, I get an email or two from Ray every week.
Here.
Thank you, Chair. So I have a couple of questions. CERT with a C, means Community Emergency Response Team?
Community Emergency Response Team.
Okay, because it's the state police CERT too, so not the same thing. So I have a difference. And the generator?
Right.
What is this generator going to run?
Well, right now the generator only.
This place?
No, the school.
Oh, okay.
Right now that generator only runs lights and the refrigerator, that's it.
So they couldn't cook or anything?
Nope.
No heat?
No heat.
No water?
Just the, just the emergency lights and the, and the refrigerator freezer.
Nothing.
It boggles me because it's a huge thing and then it only does that.
Yeah.
So, and when we looked at it once before, it was about seventy thousand dollars. Now it would be probably somewhere between a hundred and hundred and twenty-five thousand.
What size generator are we talking about?
Well, it'd have to be big enough to run lights.
Fifty thousand KW, seventy-five?
I haven't gotten that far. Actually talking over my.
You're talking a lot more money than what you're talking now.
Yeah. But it needs to be able to run, you know, lights and heat and water.
Right, a hundred percent, because we need water on the wall, you're well. So heat, cooking, lights, everything, like your house on a generator, basically everything. Wow, that's a big generator.
Yeah. And my, the last time when we talked about it, they were talking about moving the generators there now, down to the highway department where they would be able to use it in a better way than they're being, it's being used now.
Does that one come on automatically?
It comes on automatically every Tuesday at seven PM.
It tests itself, yeah. So when the tower's out, it comes on automatically, that's what I meant.
Well, yes.
Supposed to.
That's the, yeah.
Supposed to.
The figure you mentioned of, I think I understood what you said. Granted, it would be more expensive now, but seventy-five, twenty was the ratio from, but they would cover and then twenty was.
Yeah, we'd cover seventy-five.
Would that ratio maintain itself as the price goes up?
Yes.
Roughly, what it would cost us? Okay, thank you. Francois, you had your hand up.
Thank you very much, Francois Stiger sixty-five, Fieldville Road. Quick question, I would assume, I'm going to preempt this here, but the assumption here is, is most of these generators typically run either with diesel or propane as the fuel source. Is there a possibility for the utilization or the procurement of a battery system? The reason I'm asking that is, is because a large battery system right now, not only are they available to run facilities like this here, but they potentially also involve the ability to not have to depend on a fuel that, say for example, let's take the case of two thousand and eight, where a lot of our infrastructure was down, not only for a day, but actually many places were down for a whole week. Some of these battery energy storage systems can actually outlast the fuel that you have potentially in a tank. And in addition to this here, if done properly and correctly, and it's just a thought and idea, it can actually be worked in conjunction with the local utilities. Utilities are very interested in having battery energy storage systems available and will oftentimes pay for large entities such as the one that you have here in order to be able to utilize some of that battery power during periods of time when they need electricity and not have to go into the open market and buy very expensive electricity. So I'm just asking the question, and certainly something I would ask you to please explore, as to whether or not a battery operated backup system would potentially be considered as also an alternative as, for backup power.
Yeah, there are all systems out there that are solar, the battery is also, can run off a solar panel. So, I mean, but, you know, that's next year, you know, and that's what, that's next year when we start writing the BRIC, we're going to need to, that's also the kind of details that was, we couldn't possibly do that this year, but maybe next year.
To look into it, yeah. I think that's what he was asking.
That's exactly what I'm asking.
Suggesting, yeah.
So you seem to know a little bit about them, Francois. So like on the battery system you're talking about, what happens if you have no power to recharge that battery for two weeks?
Well, the same thing could be said about not having a gas delivery or propane delivery. Typically in emergency situations like that, people do stay at home and they look at supplying their own energy at home. This is really more than anything, being able to keep the lights running for at least a minimum of a day until you can get the kids back home safely.
So let's take the storm from two thousand twelve, or whatever it was.
Two thousand eight.
Two thousand eight. And how long is power out around here?
Two weeks, two to three weeks.
Depending on where you were.
Yeah, so.
Typically, schools would not have been open during that period of time. I know Gardner, for example, was closed and Fitchburg was closed.
They're still going to have your heat because you freeze your water pipes.
That's precisely where it is. And that you're not using the electricity necessarily for running lights or anything else, but you're just basically keeping the circulators running, the fuel that you may have in the, in the building to keep the minimum temperature so that nothing freezes, et cetera. That's really where the value comes in here. And the battery energy storage systems, if designed properly, can last significantly longer. There's something you keep in mind.
Just as a piece of trivia, is that, you know, the world, little towns like us, we do much better in handling, because we're used to, we're always thinking about being, how are we going to maintain this, how are we going to maintain that? Because our homes are like little islands, everyone, you need to maintain your septic system, you need to maintain and be concerned about how, where your trees are, so that you don't want them coming too close to the house for a French fire. Are you sitting in a floodplain? So we're a little more aware of all of that than, but the city folks do not do well in this type of.
Well, because they're totally dependent on the services provided. We only get electricity, so.
Yeah.
But we have generators and stuff to make up for that, or panels with batteries.
So we're a little more, you know, right from the get-go, we're like a step ahead of the game, but in order to do that, we've got to make sure that we put all the pieces in place so that we maintain that resilience.
And the cities come and steal all our food, that's what they do. When things go bad.
Excuse me.
Lock and load.
Any other questions?
Any other comments or questions from anyone?
No, we're moving on.
Mike?
Mike Stoll, five Lombard Road. Judy, you may or may not know the answer to this, but the emergency generator here that's tested, run weekly, is it run under load or is the generator just running, just testing the generator standalone?
The best of my knowledge is just running to test it alone.
I suggest while you're looking into things, that you have it at least periodically run under load, because that's the only way you really test the system.
I can, I think the school, the school might have that.
We lose power enough, no offense, I'm not trying to, I understand what you're saying, but we lose power enough, pretty sure it gets tested a couple times a year.
Underload.
Well, because the freezer runs, or the fridge runs.
Well, there may be a delay, there are, as was being discussed, there's battery backups. I'm not familiar with the system, it has to be someone that's familiar with it, but it's always better, even if you get, you're running it weekly, which seems like a lot of testing. And I'll tell you, having been very familiar with other systems, it's probably better to test less frequently unless you're having problems and test it under load periodically and not rely on emergency situations to test it under load. I can tell you, other emergency systems have adopted a little bit of a different approach than just waiting on random power outages to test your system.
They need to go back to the school district and they may have that kind of information and then we can, that gives us a starting point anyway and then go from there.
Thank you, Judy, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Are there any other comments or questions for Judy? If not, thanks a lot.
I'm sorry, one more.
Oh, okay.
Josh, did we speak about a space, you were looking for a space?
I got a corner.
You did?
Yes.
For storage of the books, the manuals or whatever, in case of.
Yeah, I've got a little desk and it's a corner desk, so I put it there and, you know, what I, I was going to ask Travis if you could put up a shelf above it, but that's the only, otherwise we got our, I got a corner.
We have a custodian, I think that's good to that.
You know.
Have you, have you asked Jim, the custodian, could he put up?
I was just looking out.
Depending on what kind of shelf?
Shelf, maybe?
Yeah, possibly.
Possibly?
Yeah, I was just looking at all the different guidebooks and things like that and realized that we probably needed to have some sort of shelf for that.
Well, at least you have a space now, that's all I was concerned about, we could have
Yeah, and emergency management, we're going to be, if it is a disaster or some
space.
sort of weather event or something like that, you're going to be out and about talking to people, so a corner is just fine and I'm very happy to have my little corner.
You've got to have a central command type place, don't you?
If you, I think if you were going to have central command, it would come into this space.
What, your desk won't handle that, no?
That's if the generator starts.
Yeah.
Or not out of fuel.
Or it doesn't blow up like it did in two thousand eight.
Anything else?
Thank you.
Judy, I want to thank you very much for everything, your time and effort and for keeping us briefed on this whole thing.
Yep.
Thank Dennis also, thank you very much.
Yep, and I'll be back next year.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I should have those forms for you tomorrow or the next day.
Okay.
They made it really hard to get our SAM numbers. To get the SAM number.
Oh, yes. Even for the MRC, when I have to get it for that grant, it's like.
It's difficult to get the number that you need to apply for federal grants.
Yeah.
They just, and they changed the system just in the last two years too, so it used to be just a simple matter of getting the duns, but now you have to have a unique ID and you have to have a SAM number and. and you have to have a SAM number and.
I'm sure there's lots of emails that go back.
Thank you, yeah.
Yeah, I know, that's, that's the way that goes, yes.
Travis, would you like to join us?
Travis, please, we'd love to join us, because we have this space.
And now you are.
Sorry, I didn't hear you.
Appreciate you coming, thank you. Turn it over to you and.
I have a.
Thank you.
Thank you. A few extra if anybody else would like one.
Thank you.
Welcome, Charlie.
After everything, after everything, which is unusual, because we now have a new downtown that we'll be talking about in terms of your plans as opposed to what happened over the years.
So for ones that haven't been here, I put out a winter operation plan, so everybody in the town understands that we have, we do have a plan. That's something that a town should have, so there's ways and rules that we go by. So in the process of this, it explains, um, what we do to predict what we're, to be prepared for any storms coming, how we prepare for them, what is the, um, ways in going about calling in the crew and getting the equipment ready, having the materials on hand and ways of clearing the roads in town, sidewalks, buildings, and, um, and if so, breakdowns, what would happen for that timely fashion would obviously become more extended and take us more time to get it done, and also depending on how many people we have in the crew at that time of operation. So it does have quite a bit in here, so well much, I don't know how much you really want me to go over. But it does have a table of contents, which has the resources that we use for planning winter, winter operations, uh, town road and sidewalk operations, winter period definitions, as in pre-winter preparations, winter storm operations, snow plowing and treating operations, winter operations during non-storm periods, post-winter, and then we have equipment, it'll let you explain all the equipment that the D P W has to fight and use in winter operations, uh, what happens in emergency situations, the town bylaws, which the town has stating not parking on the edges of the road, having basketball hoops, portable ones that are on the side of the road are to be removed, and if not, and if they do damage vehicles, that it is, uh, the town can go after the property owner for damages. Mailboxes is a big one, that has that all in there. Uh, we work closely with the schools and police, fire, town administrator. I'll be plowing and the, the head of the school will call me and ask how the town is, you know, if we need more time, if you think it's good, should they go on, should they delay, whatever it may be, so, um, we have close relations there. A lot of things, they, they let us know if this school closing, so, you know, we can worry about the roads and not have to rush in and clean the school parking lots and that type of thing, so that helps out very well. Uh, the, we also in here explain the procedures for snow removal, um, how we go about it and a lot of it, well, you'll see, it, it states, um, with a full crew, we got six routes, and, um, every route has a main drag, which is sixty-two, sixty-eight, Williamsville, Brunchardt, New Templeton, New Westminster, Brigham, Elm, Barry Road. Those are them, those are ones, those take main priority over the side streets, and then once we do that, uh, the crew knows to go to their side roads uh, to take care of them, open it up so people can get home. But then they know how long it takes them to do another loop through their main roads again, so, um, it's quite a process. I know sixty-eight is mine, I know just to do one trip up and one trip back is forty-five minutes, so, um, it's not that we don't want to be on roads, but it takes quite a long time to go up and down, uh, the roads, depending on the mileage and, uh, so, and how bad, or how, how much the snow's coming down, an inch or two an hour, it's crazy, so it's, it's longer than that.
Could I jump in for a minute, Travis, anyway, because one of the things I brought up at our last meeting, uh, which is one of the reasons we wanted to have you come in, but besides that, if you could address that for us as well as for me personally and the people who now live downtown, the sidewalks where, uh, the sidewalk that has the mailboxes cemented in it and so forth, what's the, you can't possibly plow that with the sidewalk plow that we have had used in the past. What is the plans for that particular sidewalk through the town? I mean, are the people basically, hey, get your shovel out, you're gonna have to clear your own area because we can't get by your mailbox to do the sidewalk?
I went out prior to, a lot of it going down, I walked with Nate down there, all of a sudden we measured behind him, and there's actually just barely enough room behind him, but we don't have a plow anymore, we have a snow blower, so. We had a bylaw change back in the day, I had wrote a bylaw in there stating that if anyone had a sidewalk in front of them, that they would maintain that, that didn't go over so well, so then they ended up wanting us to get an updated snow blower, which we did, and, um, between the machine, the snow blower, and we have a little mini spreader on the back of it, so it's not a huge machine, it's narrow, it's probably.
So you don't see, you don't see it as a problem, really?
No.
That can fit in there? That machine, that sits there on the corner?
It's not that big, it's not that wide.
I know, but it's.
It's not that wide, because it articulates, so it's really handled.
Yeah, I know, but.
It's also not universal in terms of the differences with some of these people.
Okay.
It's, um, it's a, maybe about four feet wide. The snow blower is five, because that's the standard for a sidewalk, so that's why.
Yeah, I know, but the mailboxes are like in the middle.
Yeah, some of them are, right.
It, it looks, it looks worse than actually if you stand there.
Okay.
Will we go on the lawn a little bit, maybe to get around, possibly?
Okay, so people are just gonna be aware that.
But, I mean, it's, it's, it is what it is.
Might chew up the lawn, but at least the sidewalk will be.
You're only gonna be maybe that if, if so.
All right.
Honestly, the snow blowers don't make a mess as much. I mean, they, you saw last year and the year before last, because we had sidewalks that were all mismatched and they weren't five feet wide, they were only four feet wide, that was the old standard, so, yeah, we were pretty much, if it wasn't frozen, grating the edges of the sidewalk. So that's where you saw a mess. Other than that, a snow blower, if anyone has a snow blower, knows that it doesn't leave piles, it literally just leaves them flat, so the, the crew knows that whoever's in it to, you know, take mention of driveways, to not pile it in there, we usually will stop, turn the blower, so we blow over the driveway and then continue on, but we put it down along the edge of the walkway, there's quite a bit more, depending on which way you come into town, on what side it is, it's like a double sidewalk, so that's gonna take a little more time, um, but there's, I mean, we have ways of clearing it, I'm not, I'm not really worried about it.
Appreciate that. Two other things that I'm interested in anyway, um, can you let, give us an idea of where we are at in terms of personnel as well as what's the shape of the equipment, everything ready as opposed to semi-ready or any, nothing broken, nothing off the road type thing, are we ready to go?
Well, the snow blower. No, there's a, we're waiting on a couple of pieces that's supposed to be here tomorrow that, that locks in the clutch, they break, so we got some coming and we have some spares, so, um, that's it. Otherwise, if the machines run in, we put the spreader on it today, put the skinnier tires on it, took the turf tires off, and, um, yeah, I mean, everything's pretty much, I'm, we're down one, one crew member and, uh, right now, um, I'm having a gentleman that came in last year to help train, he was a veteran, a battery D B W, loved to maintain for them for many years, so.
So coming in to see, see the winter, basically?
Train. No, he's coming in, I have one new gentleman, Ben Sights, he, um, has some plowing experience, but plowing a parking lot and the driveways, nothing like plowing a road, and so, um, um, gentleman like that, I know, he, he's gonna come in, he's gonna sit in with Ben, which then will allow for the mechanic to jump in another truck and take on a route, so all our routes will be covered. And then I have my two part-time, uh, winter help, Paul Sweeney being one of them, um, that's all ready to go. We do have, hopefully being picking up tomorrow is our twenty-one, that had a warranty with front-end parts, so it's at Sunnyside, supposed to be done today. So hopefully we pick it up tomorrow and then put the spreader in the back of that.
And how are we on the melting agency, this would be you?
Well, other than last storm, so I mean, we're probably about seven hundred ton and then should actually, so our show today, so I mean, um, we've gone through all the equipment, uh, it's been greased and everything's been checked, cleaned up, um, and this, yeah, right now, I mean, uh, kept the guys in to, um, really help with the mechanic and do this little stuff like we did with the trackless and stuff like that, which is the sidewalk machine, so yeah, that, that's what that is.
How's the introduction of the brine system, Ben?
I was just about to have that.
So then.
Where's Brian going?
So I was, we were there last week, and we were having training on it then from the gentleman that sold it to us, the equipment, they tested prior to, not this gentleman, but the manufacturer tested, and they must have had, one way or the other, had some water, it froze the valve and broke it, so we came back today, replaced that, and it was an, it was an O-ring leaking, we had a hose come off, so it's just like a rush mode drying tube. There's a lot that went into that to set it up, so we're just trying to get it, I know it's right now, but unfortunately, between parts and everything coming in and having three towns come together to join, to get it, everything together, it took some time, so, but we did get some training on it today. The thing that's holding us up a little bit is that the building that it's in only has two hundred and eight volts, the motor's two hundred and thirty volts, so now we gotta get a, um, pretty much a transformer, a little transformer to boost up the voltage, so it doesn't ruin the pump.
Nobody caught that? Nobody caught that? No?
Electrician put it in, so I, I don't know.
So.
Yeah, nevermind.
Town electrician?
All right, well, that's a.
No, it was, it was.
Commercial guy?
Oh.
But anyways, so, we're doing it, we're getting it, we'll get it, and, um, it, it, like I said, it's a, it's a nice system and, uh, will help us out a lot. I wanted to do it prior to, I do have a little bit left in the tank, so you might see some lines out there tomorrow. We will be pre-treating the back roads prior to, and that's gonna be regular rock salt, so, um, just for a little information so everybody understands. We treat the back roads first, less traffic, the material will stay there. The last thing to be treated is your main drags. That's why we're trying to treat them with brine as best we can, and then usually if we didn't have the brine and we were treating before, you would see us do it with rock salt, we save it to the end, just because high-traffic areas, cars run over it, it blows a lot of it off, doesn't keep as much onto the road, and it's very efficient that way. So, and all of us have been through training year after year, two to three different types of training, we're going to a liquid class at the end of this month, probably next week, and, um, I got a training tomorrow, but, um, all the guys are there, they, they're very knowledgeable of what's going on, and, uh, there's no class out there, and any class will tell you that, there's no, nothing in a book that's gonna teach you exactly what you need to do on the road.
You gotta get out and do it, right.
It's sea time, the weather changes, you gotta know ground temp, you know, the process of getting road temp sensors for the rest of the trucks, so you understand.
Or change. Yeah. And it's New England. And it's New England.
Because it can be thirty degrees here, but the ground temp's twenty-five degrees, that makes a big difference, applying brine especially. How effective your chemical's gonna work on the ground, what you should put on the ground, if you should put anything on the ground, and, uh, the classes do help, but the number one best snow removal tool is a plow blade.
Is there an average temperature that you basically wouldn't put anything on the ground if it weren't below that?
They're in the negatives.
Yeah.
Once you're in the negatives.
Mm-hmm.
So the guys know also if it gets really cold and it's snowing and the, and it's coming down really well, and you'll watch the snow just rush over the roads, we'll just plow, we won't treat, because once you treat, salt needs the moisture, it sucks in the moisture and then you're chasing it all night.
Yeah.
And then you get a hard pack and then you, it just, it goes crazy. Last year, that was just freak, that, that got everybody. It was raining, then it turned like, it just froze, it went to a deep freeze, it was below zero.
Up and down.
And you just couldn't get everywhere, I think there was a couple spots on sixty-eight, and some on the side roads, it was a mess. But right there, really, there's not much you can do, you can take, you don't have belly blades. We do have a grater, which we swap over the blade and put the carbide on that, so we could do that, so it wouldn't harm the road, and that could help get some of that if it was really bad off, but we've been pretty good in town to not really have any hard pack or anything like that on the road, so. I'm confident, it'd be nice to have one more person, and, um, hopefully we'll get there. That's it, really.
Any questions besides the ones I asked them? Somebody want more?
Yeah, I got a couple questions.
Go ahead.
What is the, I don't know if you can answer this, Travis, but what is the expectation uptown here now with these new sidewalks going through the ends of people's driveways? Now, where does the responsibility end for the town, start with the homeowner? Because if you're gonna be plowing sidewalks, conceivably, you're going to be leaving berms on either side of the, the sidewalk clearing at the end of folks' driveways. I mean, who, who's responsible for what? Do we know?
You're responsible for your driveway.
So from the sidewalk to the road?
From the road, all the way through is your responsibility. We take care of the sidewalk, and nothing's changed, just the sidewalk got bigger. We've done it for years.
Right, which is gonna mean more snow potentially for people to have to, and what happens if a, if a person has a plow? Do they not, again, not necessarily for you, but what happens if a person hires a plow to do their driveway and the plow damages the said sidewalk that he's gotta go over? Plow.
I have one person call me and told him to just be careful, I mean, I don't, I haven't seen him, I don't know if they're finished with the aprons.
Right, yeah.
I, I couldn't tell you that. I know we have a lift coming in here and they have a piece of wood prior to it that they used to form the sidewalk, that's still there, so that protects it some. Um, I had one, one gentleman ask me about it, I just said, you plow it like you would normally plow the sidewalk, just, you know, you plow your driveway, unfortunately, you have, you know, ten-foot sidewalk now and that's there, and just gotta be careful over it, I mean, it, you're not flying into your driveway anyways, especially from the main drag, and they're responsible for their driveway, and then if they put anything out after we've plowed, then I would say they would have to remove the windrows so people can get over. If we've already plowed it, it'd be the same as if we were plowing a road and someone plowed across, which you're not supposed to, you, you'd have to clean up your mess, because it, it takes off our chemical also on the road for safety purposes. It's, it's gonna be like anything, a change for people.
Yeah, it is, right.
And once we get it, you know, it's, uh, some people gain frontage and some people lost frontage, right, so, I mean, up towards direct field, they had no frontage, now they get ten feet of frontage and then some.
And until we go through it this winter, we can't really predict what these other things that would pop up.
Yeah, well, like I said, trust me, that's probably my least concern. My, my more of a concern is, one, I used to be able to bring, bring my wing right through the center of town.
Yeah.
Now I gotta see if I gotta bring it in and I can still make it through the center of town, and then I have Paul, he helps me come through. And then I have Paul, he helps me come through there and he can't turn in right away on and any of these dips that the people are gonna park, because you're gonna catch your tire and it'll be replacing tires consistently, so. I'm saying I'm gonna be putting barrels on the corners, so I at least know where the bump outs come out and go back in. Once I get some money, I could put stakes up later on, you know, the little markers, so we can see where the edge is, you know, uh it's a work in progress. I don't have any issue with saying that we won't get them, you know, plowed, because we did it when they were really in bad condition.
You guys, you guys be at curbing now?
Yeah, I have a question.
Can you maybe find some details about that? See what, uh who's responsible for what? Maybe reach out to KP Law or something, just so you know. Um yeah, just curious, um I was reading through your, your document here, nice document, um you, you use the, the brine machine for dirt roads in the summertime, you said, somewhere in here, what do you, what do you put it in in the summertime? Just water?
I don't do brine, I don't do brine, I do use a dust control on the dirt roads with the brine truck.
Right.
The brine truck.
Is it, is it a liquid, is it a liquid thing?
Yeah, the spray truck is a spray truck.
Yeah, yeah.
So I use it summer and winter, so I, in the summertime, I use it for dust control on the dirt roads. In the wintertime, we have, if you look on the back of it, right now it says anti-icing, stay back five hundred feet. And I got a board that goes across it and says dust control, stay back five hundred feet. I saw that, so I have, it's a truck that we got from Princeton Fire Department that they weren't using and we transformed it to a spray truck. And um at the time, other than these last two years, I never went over my snow budget, so I had some left in there and that's how we did the use spray setup that we put on that truck. I bought the two brine tanks and a pump system, so we had it. The only thing that we didn't have was town water, so we had it trucked in. And at that time, we were paying sixty cents a gallon to bring it in. Now having what we are with Templeton, you're probably maybe ten, fifteen cents, you know, so I mean, it's a big cost savings.
Yeah, that's true.
You know, you're putting, I have it, this is honestly, we normally on a full treatment, we put out two hundred and fifty per lane mile, okay? So then we do half treatments, a hundred and twenty-five pounds per lane mile. If you do brine, you put out, and we put out forty gallons per lane mile, which is two point two-three pounds of salt, which equals ninety-one point two oh pounds per lane mile. So this shows you, you're putting out less. It's not, it's definitely helped the environment, it, money-wise, 'cause there's times when you can use it instead of spreading more when brine would be just fine to do it. And it can get you, like I said, you can put it out a week ahead, 'cause when you put it out, it's wet, the moisture leaves it. It's the same as if we have a storm and you see the roads are white a little bit, that's brine. It's just over the whole road, not in, not in lines. So this can help us if, like now, this time, when we have warm weather, but the ground's a little cold and we have a light mist come in or something like that, that could help us, we do it prior to on a workday. There's no overtime, there's no multiple trucks, we're not putting out extensive amount of salt. Um it can help us prior to, like to the storm, put it out ahead of time. And then that helps not having to have people come in so early, saves on overtime. It, it has a lot of benefits to it, and there is, you add a, you add a as an additive, you add to it also to help bring it down, salt's good to about eighteen degrees. And then below that, that's why you add the additive to make it to like negative six. So as the winter comes and gets colder, then you would need an additive for brine to be efficient. I'm doing different things, my truck has two saddle tanks on it and there's different, different ways of what you could do to save on rock salt also, um is you could spray your salt prior to spreading it on the road, which then you can cut down on the amount of rock salt that you put out to what you're spraying. And that, say, if you just put rock salt down, just an example, if I left from here and I went down a garden and I came back, it's about twenty minutes, half an hour, you'll start to see the salt start to work. If you were to have it wet, which we do have a pre-treated salt, that, it has mag, so it's somewhat wet. But when you're spraying it with brine, it's instantly wet, so then it comes down, hits the ground and starts to work automatically. So then it turns into maybe fifteen minutes compared to an hour, half an hour. So these are all little things that we're trying, one, helps saving costs, two, get a better effect out of what we're doing, get a better product. Um then once we do do that, then you'll see, we'll start adding it to other trucks and that way it's easier to explain how it is, other than you're not wasting the product, not buying all this equipment and people really don't understand what we need to do with it. So it does have great benefits, um we'll go a long way with it, and I think we've come a long way right now, so.
Anyone have anything else? Thanks Travis, we thank you very much and we appreciate all the things that you guys do, and please let the other guys know too. And have a safe winter, that's hopeful, hopeful.
Have a, have a good Thanksgiving.
Have a good night.
Thank you Travis.
Yes, happy Thanksgiving too, to you.
Yeah, I think it went to two or one to three, one of the other.
That's what they're saying now?
But it turns the, turns the rain right after.
Oh yeah, slushy dust.
That's what, tomorrow, into Wednesday, into Wednesday, yeah, okay.
Not gonna be.
Awesome.
Hi.
Thank you Travis.
Uh item seven, we now have a consent agenda, so let me go through it. Uh approval at select board meeting minutes of October sixteenth, twenty twenty-three. Wage authorization for Candace Livingston, town clerk assessor, town clerk assessor clerk stipend um for forty hours. Uh are there any questions or holes on any of those, like two items?
Yeah, I've got a question, what was the um, how many hours was Candace working previously?
Thirty-three with a stipend and it just, what I said, it really wasn't working out. 'Cause the hours were equalling the forty anyway and she was here and she was going over. So this is going to, instead of splitting it up thirty-two and the assessor's stipend allow her to act as different things come in, but she has stated that she would prefer.
So are we gonna use the funds for the stipend to add to the salary?
Yep, so with the stipend, the land use clerk, town planner position that we had last year and the treasurer collector in, in the, in the town clerk, the positions actually, once all is said and done in this order, save six thousand four hundred dollars.
Very good, thank you.
Any other questions? Seeing none, could we have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Motion made, is there a second?
Second.
Candace had a wonderful six-month review, she's been getting very high remarks from the constituents and members of the various boards and committees. The assessing portion of her job is difficult and we're looking at different opportunities that I don't really wanna go into too much detail in public session quite yet. But we're looking to make that part of her role easier than it is currently.
Very good, great news.
Okay, so the motion is, uh yes?
Can I ask a question?
Yes, go ahead, maybe.
I know, I know, sorry. I just have a question, for all the years in the past with the town clerks, thirty, whatever the hours were, have been sufficient until we lost Mallory. Um because the town clerk then was doing dual parts, even though people couldn't read the notes. I'm just wondering where all this work came from that's made her into a forty-hour week?
There's a whole other role. The, the, Candace is the town clerk and the assessor's clerk and she's doing a small portion of land use.
Okay, so when Mallory's job, possibly?
Yep, parts of Mallory's job, if you, a little later down in the agenda, there is a proposed appointment for a new land use clerk. I called it the administrative clerk slash land use, 'cause I do want to be able to use this employee to help with grants and to help with communications and to help when the town clerk is really, really busy during pre-like mail-in election seasons versus we were, and we'll talk about that a lot, we were very fortunate with the last person we had in that role and their experience. With what we can possibly pay that position, the experience just isn't there. So I am looking and have proposed and in my authority as town administrator, have appointed a woman who is very bright and I think she'll be able to take on the role very quickly and work with the different boards and committees to garner experience relatively quickly. She's actually the young woman that does the storytime, so she's gonna be doing more work as well.
Okay, I didn't understand.
Uh yes?
Oh, I'm sorry, one more. So you were saying that with Candace at forty hours and her doing the town clerk job and the assess, assessors clerk and land use was gonna save you six thousand?
All, when all is said and done, we're saving six thousand four hundred dollars.
All is said and done, after you hire a land use clerk or not?
Yes, yes.
So even with a new land use clerk and giving Candace seven more hours, you're still six thousand ahead?
Yes, sir.
Very good.
Because uh we had set it up last year to make Mark a part-time town planner because of his experience and
I remember that, yeah.
the employee that I am proposing we take on does not have experience in land use akin to Mark.
Yeah, so it's a lower rate, yep. Excellent, thank you.
Anything else?
That's it.
Okay, the motion has been made and second, uh no, no further discussion, all in favor?
Yes.
Yes, opposed, motion carried, um new business. Uh they proposed authorizations, Nate, if you would?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, these are the two grants that I spoke of a few weeks ago from the community compact agreement. I applied for them earlier this year based upon some of the goals that we had set during our goal-setting session. So these two grants would be aiding us in the setting of a professional development strategy. One of our goals was to set a five-year training plan, so that would aid in that and also provide a significant amount of training for different employees over the course of the year that we would be doing the project. And the other is the technological efficiencies goal that we had spoken about. That is me working with the Collin Center to find ways to create efficiencies. There is also an emerging technologies portion of this part, of this grant opportunity, but that's something that we'll have to see where that goes. But both of these would be working with the Collin Center over the course of some time and staff training.
I have questions.
Oh, go.
No, go, I saw Peter's hand beat me.
Alright.
Yeah, I saw it.
Be fair.
Yeah, I saw it.
No, he looked right when hurt.
Yep.
Um so the Collin Center is, what's the Collin Center again, remind me?
The Collin Center is a group out of UMass.
Okay, so we're talking, so you said you're gonna get a grant to cover this training or whatever it is?
We already did.
So you already, you got fifty-five thousand?
Seventy-six thousand four hundred dollars.
Okay, so there's no money out of it.
So no cost on the town?
No, zero, zero money out of it.
That's why I was reading this and it was like the town's responsible, I'm like, wait a minute. That's what maybe I was like, no?
No, we, we got a grant for one hundred percent of it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah, I applied for it, you accepted it.
Three meetings ago? Okay.
Yeah, but that's not, the way you read, it's not on here, but the way you read it, like the town's portion, I'm like, whoa, whoa, whoa.
Yeah, so we, we got kind of a check for seventy-six thousand dollars. Like, it was actually pretty funny, I can tell the story, it came in as CCC, Community Compact Cabinet. So Mary came running in going, Nate, why did we get almost eighty thousand dollars from the CCC? The Cannabis Control Commission.
Yeah, thought happened.
Yeah.
Alright, so let's, let's talk about this now, so you know, in this first proposal I opened up, it says twelve-five is due to this, to this place, you know?
Yeah, the state gave us all the money already.
And twelve-five is due upon completion of step three, so all that's paid and coming right out of the grant, we pay nothing out of town revenue.
As long as it's a hundred percent covered, I like it.
It is a hundred percent covered and we received the funds.
I like it. Do you please like it?
Authorization to sign the agreements.
We, yeah, to authorize town, to authorize town administrator to execute any necessary contracts related to the matter upon review and approval of said contracts by town council, that would be the motion.
I'd like to make that motion, so so moved.
Okay, motions made, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion, questions? Seeing none, all in favor?
Yes.
Yes, opposed, motion carried?
In a lot of these, by doing these, it will allow us to seek heavier and more substantial grants based on the findings. Like I'm also not in love with government studies, which is why you'll see both of these have a tangible aspect. One is there's actual training going on and the other is that there's sixty-five hundred dollars to implement a technological efficiency. 'Cause I find the, except spending seventy-six thousand five hundred dollars on government studies to be obscene, but if.
It's also absurd, because if you have no way to do any action with it, then why, why did we just spend that money?
Yep.
So this at least has.
Yeah, and there's some tangible actual training and efficiencies out there. And then it opens us up to then seek grants through the compact cabinet for what we find.
Any other questions? Okay, uh moving on to the administrative clerk slash land use slash cable clerk, Patricia Low. Uh Nate, if you wanna give us more information on that, she alluded to it, so.
Yeah, so I, I sort of went into this a little while ago while talking to Mr. Sweeney. The administrative clerk slash land use is the land use clerk. Mark had taken a great opportunity for him and unfortunately had to leave us after a year of service. I can say with one hundred percent certainty that that office is in a better position than it was one year ago. Mark has noted that within the confines of his own schedule, he's willing to come in and work with Patricia on learning some of the more administrative parts of this role. I am aware, as is the chair of the planning board, that we are going to have to work with this employee, which is why I added additional work in communications and grant work. Because if I'm going to have to kind of keep my hand in land use for the foreseeable future, we're going to need some, some help in other facets, which she was very, very interested. I'm hoping to have this be very, very project-based. Uh Tricia is a very, she has a lot of energy, I don't know of if, who's met her yet.
I don't think, I don't think I have.
She's the afternoon storyteller at the library. And she took some time off of working to have her children and now is looking to slowly but surely get back into it and is interested in municipal government. So when we were having a conversation about ways to get involved, I said, hey, I know one. And so Chris and I interviewed, Chris Monroe and I interviewed her, she would be working with the, with me, the planning board, the conservation commission and the zoning board, who hasn't met in over a year. And in addition, to be honest, I kind of snuck in there that she could help Candace when the early voting is going on and things are a little hectic on that end. The cable clerk position, Bobby Tebow's been doing it for a while, she I did speak with her and she does, she's completely okay with us taking the two hours per week away because there really wasn't anything happening for them anyway. And in this, I'm hoping to not only get Tricia to write the minutes for the cable commission and aid in that way, but take on a little bit of the softer communications.
Thank you. Any questions for Nate?
Yeah, I got, I got a question, twice, twice in your um comments that you mentioned afternoon storyteller, what exactly is an afternoon storyteller at the library?
Uh she works at the library incredibly part-time and reads stories to the children in the afternoon.
What children, just anybody that wants to show up for a story?
Yeah, anybody that, all the children that want to go up for the story.
I didn't know, now I'm a regular.
She, she spoke with Travis. She, she spoke with Travis.
I didn't know we did such a thing.
They're gonna do, uh, one of the DPW guys is gonna bring a truck down there and they're gonna read a story about construction and that kind of stuff.
Right.
Right now, I, I asked her today, it was, uh, like Bailey Bear is thankful or something like that was, was today's.
The best one was when they had our old chief, Eric, read a storybook. On with Derek, yes, Derek Zoo, online. That was the best one.
They have a mascot. He is an inchworm and his name is Paige.
Yep.
A pageworm.
Yep, they had a naming contest.
His name is Paige?
Yeah. Or something like that. It's, it's a book joke. You know, I know that.
Yeah.
Oh, okay, I thought you were.
Yeah, it's like a, it's like a stuffed animal thing. It's like a mascot.
Yeah, there's no I in there. It's like a page of a book.
Maybe it's a bookworm called Paige.
Yeah.
Oh, there you go. That makes sense.
Yeah, that's what it is. Yeah, so they had a naming contest on.
Yeah, there's a naming contest.
I'm missing, oh.
I know, you guys gotta pay attention. Come on, good stuff.
Okay, ladies and gentlemen, uh, are there any other questions before?
No, thank you.
There are four motions, uh, to cover everything around what we're discussing, so we'll take them one at a time. Under item A, uh, job description, so the first motion we would need is to approve the job description for the positions of administrative clerk, land use and cable clerk.
So moved.
Motion made and a second. Okay, any discussion? Seeing none? All in favor?
Yes.
Yes. Second motion has to do with the appointment. Um, so it would be to appoint Patricia Lowe to the position of administrative clerk, land use, with a term expiring six-thirty-two, twenty-twenty-four.
So moved.
Moved, is there a second?
Second.
And a second, any discussion? Seeing none? All in favor?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
And the case we have to do.
No, not this one. I have clarifying information on the next one before someone asks.
Okay.
So again, all in favor of that second motion?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, opposed, motion carried. Third motion has to do with the wage authorization.
E four is twenty-one sixty-two per hour, purposely lower than the existing administrative employees in the office.
Twenty-four sixty-two.
Oh, we, we, we still have another motion prior to that though.
Okay, sorry about that.
Uh, we need a motion to appoint Patricia Lowe to the position of cable clerk with a term expiring six-thirty-two, twenty-twenty-four. Can we have a motion for that?
So moved.
Moved, any sec- second. Any discussion? Seeing none? All in favor?
Yes.
Yes, opposed, motion carried. Now for the wage authorization. To authorize the recommended wages for Patricia Lowe in the roles of administrative clerk, land use and cable clerk.
So moved.
Moved, is there a second?
I got a question.
Hold, we need a second before.
Second.
Okay, now, discussion, go ahead.
Where, where do these finances come from? Where does pay come from?
So, I'm glad you asked, I was just going to mention that the administrative clerk land use is out of the land use line. It's what we were using to pay Mark and the cable clerk is out of the pay access funds that are not taxpayer dollars. They are a small fee on the back of your spectrum bill.
So no additional revenue impact to the budget?
No, we, it'll sit in the line and come out as free cash, but we're technically six thousand four hundred and some change under where we were.
Very good, thank you.
Okay, so the motion is a eight and second. Any further discussion or questions? Seeing none? All in favor?
Yes.
Yes, opposed, seeing none, motion carried. Next item is the annual license renewal. Note to all of you before we, we have to sign all these before we go home tonight. What we will need, but I need to read them first, but what we will need is a vote to approve the list of licenses and then we will sign each of them. I'm required to read the list into the record, so let me go through the list first of all. Item one, Hubbardson Rod and Gun, common vic, alcohol and amusement devices. Item two, Hubbardson Market, common vic, alcohol, Sunday sales of alcohol. Item three, Pizza Palace, common vic, wine and malt, amusement devices. Four, Rieta Flea Market, common vic, alcohol. Five, Hubbardson One-Stop, common vic, alcohol, Sunday sales of alcohol. Item six, Peaceful Acres, a common vic, general on-premises club, wine and malt. Item seven, Stars and Stripes Diner, common vic. Item eight, RJ Auto Sales, class two auto. Item nine, Ladybug Farm, common vic, and item ten, AAA Today, class two auto. So those are the licenses that we need to approve. Uh, can we do that entire list in one motion? Uh, do we need one for each of these?
You can do the entire list in one motion. I don't think anyone's ever gonna call you on it, so.
Okay. Okay.
I think we made the, yeah, we did it in one, I'm pretty sure.
Okay, so I would ask then that the motion be made to accept, uh, the list as read to, to approve the, the licenses.
So moved.
Okay, motion made, is there a second?
Second.
Any, any discussion on any of these?
Yeah, I got discussion.
Go ahead. Oh, okay, first of all, go ahead, Chris.
What, what, um, what exactly is a common vic?
You had to ask. I've been having trouble with this for years.
Common vic.
A common victulier license is a sale of goods, like just general food and beverage. That is not specialized in any way. It is not cooked. It, like, it's, hold on, look it up.
I, I got it, you don't need to look it up.
Like you're selling Twinkies.
Second question. Why, why are some of these businesses looking for a particular Sunday sales of alcohol? But Rieta Flea Market is not looking for a particular Sunday sales of alcohol, even though the flea market is on Sunday and that's when they sell alcohol.
Don't they sell liquor too?
Nothing on that.
These two Hubbardson Market.
Yeah, they sell it.
And you Hubbardson One-Stop sell liquor instead of not just beer and wine.
Well, I'm not concerned so much with the product. I'm concerned with why is one specifying Sunday sales, but the other one is not specif- is it?
Because it's served. You're, they're serviced.
So Sunday sales is, is retail sales?
Yes.
Yes.
And? Okay.
Yeah, cause the only ones that have Sunday sales are the retail shops.
It's a package store versus like a full alcohol bar.
Okay, got it.
And, and it only makes it a little more confusing, but that's the definition of common victulier.
A person doing licenses and general provisions.
Anything that connects to the general laws just makes it worse.
So now you gotta read the general laws.
So it's a restaurant, basically.
Yeah, it's a, it's a very simple restaurant.
If it's not correct, like, so then like, yeah, like someone's sandwiches and stuff.
Francois, you have a question?
Yeah, can you go back through the list, please?
Yeah.
Thank you. Quick question on, um, Peaceful Acres.
Oh.
Oh, don't do that.
It is my understanding from what I'm reading there that they have a general on-premises club. Do we have a definition of what that club is? The reason I'm asking this here is because the, the, the item about clubs here in the state of Massachusetts, as they are defined, has come in front of the planning board in the past. And, uh, I have never come across the fact that Peaceful Acres was a club, so I'm just trying to, uh, understand.
Let's see, can I have all of the licenses in the shared drive on the select board? Peaceful Acres.
So they common vic, general on-premises club, wine and malt. That's what they are asking.
Yes, past it, there.
You're supposed to start.
Well, we get a vote on it first before we start. That's why I didn't start signing any votes. I'm gonna wait till we vote on it. Should I throw up?
Yeah, general on-premises wine and malt.
It doesn't say club there. No, there's a little font.
It does at the top.
No, no, on the next page. Next page down, please. This page, which is a page on its own, says retail license renewal. It does not say club.
Well, that's, I.
It does now, but no.
Oh, now it's, all right, hold on.
So license type is, so where does the club from, come from the general? You know what I mean? I don't know.
I mean, even in their websites, they're not even known as a club. They're known as a tempra, right?
Yeah. In theory.
And there are very specific regulations as to what a club, uh, what constitutes a club here in the state of Massachusetts. I believe, I'm not stating that unequivocally at this point in time, but I would like to get some more info if that is necessary so that we could potentially review it in the future.
General on-premises club, wine and malt.
Well, yeah, but.
Two floors, top room, one room, bottom floor, ladies and men's room, storage room, furnace.
Okay. I would, I, I would ask at some point in time, maybe that, uh, our planning board, uh, reviews here with you.
Well.
Don't they have a dance hall over there?
No, what they have is a, um, I've been over there. They have, um, they have a pool house.
Yeah.
And then they have like a barish type room that.
Restaurant?
No, it's not. I would not say restaurant.
Community type room, yeah.
So that's, that, that, I guess, the word, the word club is what really is at question at this point in time.
Yeah.
Because in the state of Massachusetts, as I recall from work that we were doing when there was a piece of property that was being sold and they were actually planning on putting a club there, the planning board was very interested in understanding the concept of a club.
Oh, you're talking about what?
And per, per right, what you can do in certain zones here in our, in our town by, per, by, by, by laws.
Well, it's.
You just need to be very much aware as to what's, what's actually being.
Isn't the Rod and Gun a club?
It's a club, but it's a club for, that's why I'm, I'm trying, I'm trying to understand.
Yeah.
On the license, there is no word clubed anyplace on the license.
It's on a different license, there is.
There's multiples.
Yeah, there's multiple licenses.
Well, the ones that were signed. Oh, really? Okay.
Yeah.
And I'm not saying that it's incorrect. We just wanna make sure that this is, this is.
Mr. Chair.
So, so basically you want us to hold on, we can't move on.
No, no, I'm not asking you to hold on this here. I'm just simply saying that from our perspective.
Oh, okay, alright.
Mr. Chair, I'll work with Francois and the planning board to straighten out what club means and if they should have any role in.
So we can, so, okay.
Alright. I would think it's a club is, is a place where people gather specifically, right? A gathering spot. I mean.
Correct.
But there's several different types of.
It's a broad question, yeah.
It is, yeah.
It's the first time that I've seen this entity being, and this entity.
Oh, okay. Yes, that, that's a, like a casino.
That it will be selling alcohol. Be considered as a club. My question is, is it what type of club?
Business opportunity, I know.
Let me interrupt. We've got too many conversations going on while we're trying to deal with a motion here. So, but thank you.
I'll take it online with me.
Okay, so, uh, again, I will say I'd like, you wanna, I'd like to handle the entire list with one motion, so we could, we could. Did you make the motion already?
Yeah, I'm the second.
I did, okay.
Pretty sure.
Any further discussion on the motion?
That's where we get, I'm out, discussion.
No? Then we'll, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Yes.
Yes, opposed, none, motion's carried.
Yeah, and then we'll wait for Mrs. Janssen to get back from her trip to provide the rest of the information.
AAA, yeah.
Okay, so we gotta sign these before we go home, so let's finish up.
Yep, I'll start. Cause I do quick while you're talking.
How about, anything on the old business? I don't think so. Do we?
Nope.
Your TA report?
Yeah, so as in the email I sent to you, the clock has been fixed, so that is good for select board member Parego.
Yes, very nice, nicely done.
It will likely not be fixed long, cause I hear.
Shh, but it's gonna be good.
Ice and snow.
But it will be good. I have begun working on my five-year budget forecast, which I will present at your meeting in two weeks. I am trying to implement some of the key performance indicators that I have been speaking with the different departments about into the budget process, starting now and moving forward. Those will be just ways to make determining our budgetary impacts a little simpler than they have been in the back by putting numbers and performance metrics on different things. It will take a few years for us to get to a point where they're actually as valuable as they could potentially be, but if we don't start now, we will not get there ever. The capital improvement planning committee is likely meeting in the first week of December. I sent out feelers today for a December fifth meeting. I sent them all of the application projects and we're going to review them at their meeting. I've, as stated in one of our goals this year, have redeveloped the whole process. There, so there's a whole new form that each member of the CIPC will fill out and we will go from there. So I'm looking forward to that. There's not really anything wild in there. There's, uh, Chief Coopers looking for a new cruiser and a chief car, the extra hundred thousand dollars for snow. I was working with Candace on potentially working with a company that I worked with in Princeton to do some vault organization because there is none. So there are a variety of interesting, interesting projects. The library heat pump project is in there, but that is what we applied for a Green Communities grant for a few weeks ago. The DPW roof replacement project is entering its final phases. We did receive the PAC money from the Senate, but we went with the belief of seek forgiveness, not permission. So that money was already spent, but that is almost done. They're putting some final touches on it and then they'll be out within the next week. They've been paid their eighty percent. The Hubbardson Center School Boiler Replacement Project had, the vendors have until December twenty-first. In the first couple days, I haven't been overwhelmed with interest. The only person that actually called was somebody that was interested in providing us emergency service. Should it be not working at all, but, but it is working. Unfortunately, I got a email from the Quabbin Regional School District this past week noting that it was starting to leak more than it had previously. It's impeccable timing, but.
Well, it's gonna happen on the coldest day of the year. Tell them when it's gonna go.
Blow it out, yeah.
Uh, last week I attended the Massachusetts Municipal Managers Association Conference in Worcester. It was a great two days. I went down on Thursday during the day and a half day on Friday. We discussed how to assist in holding meetings respectfully, how to deal with unruly constituents while being respectful and keeping in mind the new found world where you can tell people in a public meeting where to go. So that, that was fun. It was also a great opportunity to share different problems and shared solutions that we could work on together. I met a good amount of people that I hadn't known before, cause that was my first MMMA meeting, but it's a lot of Ms.
MMMA.
Yeah.
M-M-A, three Ms?
Three Ms.
Three Ms.
Well, if you go, it's the MMA, MMMA. Yeah.
What?
Yeah, so, yep, that's that.
Mama.
As stated previously, I am trying two or three times a year to have a speaker series of sorts here and the first one of that is going to be an invitation to Ann Goby and she's coming to do something that I've called the Rural Priorities Roundtable. That is one week from this evening. Uh, there is a good amount of people that have expressed interest and RSVP. We're going to have it both in the senior center and hybrid. Next Tuesday, I'm beginning my coffee and community conversations. Jeff is going to come to the first one. He had noted, mostly because that's where he goes in the morning.
He'll be there anyway.
He's like a light fixture.
But that was something I wanted to do over the winter, cause there's not as many opportunities to get to see the different residents. And we'll do it the last few Tuesday, the last Tuesday of this month through April. There is a DPW up, update in here, but I think we've been updated fairly efficiently for the eve. There is a DPW up, update in here, but I think we've been updated fairly efficiently for the evening by the DPW director himself. The veteran service officer went to a, what do you call it, the unveiling of the Hero Act, the largest veterans legislation passed in Massachusetts in twenty years. There's a nice picture in there. Lauren, RVSO, is the woman second to the left. If you wanna read more about that, I did put out a press release.
I don't think second to the left is a woman.
Second to the left.
Second to the right.
Second to the right. There we go. Your other left.
Thanks, Francois.
Hey, whoa.
The only thing I didn't, when reading that, is they don't explain what the Hero Act is.
I can send you the paper. One, there was a link at the bottom. You can send it to you again.
It wasn't waiting for me. I'm good.
Yeah. Katie went through all of the holiday events upcoming.
I will say people did comment on your graphic. They liked it.
They like the graphic?
Yes, they, I've heard it a couple times. I like that graphic.
Good stuff.
Yeah.
So, what, are you ready for questions, sir?
Yes.
On this boiler, again, I'm gonna go over this like I did before. If this thing fails on the coldest day, is it the school's issue to get a temporary boiler in here in the trailer, or is it Irish? And who's paying for it?
It depends on the cost of the boiler.
You're not hearing me. You lose a boiler on the coldest day of the year, you're not gonna get, get somebody in here to change your boiler.
The school would pay the money upfront.
Excuse me?
The school would likely pay the money upfront.
For a rented trailer boiler to keep the place from freezing?
Yeah, then they would essentially invoice us.
They have to.
Okay.
Yeah. There are two-
There are two.
Thousand dollars a day, probably. Oh, there are two?
Yeah, so-
They do a different section of the building?
There's, there's a smaller one and a larger one. It's the larger one, I believe, if I remember correctly.
Yeah, the larger one, the dwell section.
That is actually the one that's leaking that, in the wintertime, they really kinda need both.
So which-
But they could limp through theoretically.
Okay, so the big one is the primary and the small one's the backup?
Yes. Well, it's secondary.
Back.
Yeah, yeah.
First of all, if, if the boiler goes, it's not gonna be our decision if we, if we bring in a backup boiler. The bottom line is we're gonna get a backup boiler.
Right.
And at a thousand dollars a day, if that's, if that's what the-
It's probably more.
If that's what he says it is, we're responsible, everything over five thousand dollars.
That's what we're concerned.
After five.
We gotta pay. So if it's here for five days, the district pays for it. If it's here for ten days, we split it.
In that room that we went in that day, the two boilers are right there.
Yeah, I, I couldn't remember the second boiler.
Yeah.
So-
But my concern is being a heating system for all the years that I was in, it's, it's gonna break when it has the most demand on it.
Murphy's Law, right?
Yeah.
Yes.
So have they tried sealing this? Do you know?
So they-
Liquid sealer. They dump in it, it seals.
I cannot speak to that fully. I'm-
I'm just trying to figure out ways to buy time here.
I'm willing to say they likely did, but-
Okay.
Well, even if we got a bid, it's not gonna be fixed till like next year, right?
I know. They're a year out getting castings. Two years.
Yeah. Yeah, that's what, that's what I mean. So it's like-
Yeah.
I did note our frustration to the school
Yeah.
that we took their quote for face value.
Yeah, well, that was-
And, and then the first quote that came in was for X that quote.
Yeah.
So.
Two thirty, it's two sixty.
So-
That was-
To be clear, um, who's maintaining this boiler currently?
The school.
The school district or the town?
School district.
So they're doing whatever they wanna do to keep this thing maintained, whatever they deem necessary. So we don't have any say into what Peter just asked, really. They're taking care of the preventative maintenance. Okay. Second question. If it blows up and we do have to go to the thousand dollar a day rental boiler, you know, again hypothetically, are we responsible for the entire bill if it goes over five thousand, or would the school district pay the first five thousand and the, we would pay the remainder of it?
I believe it's how it goes, like I said, it's how it goes down. Like when they did the, the water improvement project this past summer, they paid the first five thousand dollars because they had originally thought it was going to be under five thousand dollars.
Okay.
And then they paid that and then a week later, we had a second day with no water. At that point, it put it over the five thousand dollars and that's when we paid the seventy-five hundred or whatever we, whatever we approved at town meeting.
Francois?
Uh, I've got some questions.
Took too long. Where's your notepad? You should write it down.
Take, take a minute to-
Yeah, I know. I should have used the notepad.
Take a minute to think and-
I know, Mike's got stuff written down already. He's already used his notepad.
Anything else on the TA report?
Uh, thank you to the election staff.
Okay. I'm gonna move on, but as minute you think of it, just let me know and I'll recognize you, okay?
It's getting late.
Uh, policies to review, financial policies. Nate?
These are the financial-
Oh, I remember.
Go ahead.
Thank you. Apologize. Are there potentially any, uh, either matching grants or state funds that can be tapped for situations such as the one for this boiler? I, and if we, if you don't know this off the top of your head, is there something that we can do from an investigation perspective?
So, a lot of the grants that we're dealing with right now and are out there in general are not favorable on oil-
I understand it.
big oil furnaces. So when Peter and I actually met with the people from National Grid in hopes that they would be able to provide us some sort of relief on this, but that wasn't the case. So I am always looking for different opportunities.
It's National Grid being electric though, right?
But they are the ones that do the incentive programs?
Yeah. Oh, I see.
Put in fifty-five mini splits. That's what they want you to do.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's not gonna-
Pay that electric bill every month.
That's not gonna work.
Or go with a large geothermal system, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. Uh, financial policies.
So I sent you a summary this past week. The financial planning policies have not changed since they were in the packet for the past two meetings. The, it's the capital planning policy, the Community Preservation Act policy, the debt management policy, financial reserves policy, and the forecasting policy. A lot of this dictates the way I am supposed to provide my budgeting documents and keeps it within a, like, keep it within the booths. So a lot of this hasn't changed because I have not been here several years to kind of see what, in different opinions, works and does not work. These planning policies were put out a little bit before the management policies, so they were implemented. We have been using them and we have been sticking by them. We haven't been the best at sticking with the no free cash in the operating budget policy, but that's something we're aiming to be better at, if at all possible.
Stop talking of free cash. I don't.
We alw- we always would have a figure that we would say we didn't wanna go below and then various things happened, right?
Yeah, go back.
Yeah. Yeah.
I've-
It's always something that drives us off the rails.
Yeah, yeah.
I've begun, this isn't very nice to hear, but I have been trying to be more positive about the school and their potential budgetary issues. But I'm in the process of creating a budget for each percentage point between four and ten and to show to the taxpayers what it would mean for our general budget. I currently have what I call my, like, I think it's called the, the ugly forecast, and it's a balanced budget with no free cash at a seven percent increase at, in the school. So, but it is not pretty.
They're gonna want eight and a half next year. Or next-
I asked, seeing as October first has come and gone, I reached out to the superintendent. They have not gotten their certified numbers back from the state on-
Still?
So, yep, that was as of, I think, Thursday.
Has it been certified for them to give it to you?
Sure does.
See how long-
That's what's taken forever.
See how long we drag that one out.
Well, that's the whole thing. Once it's not, I, I will say right there, it's not the school that's been waiting for the certification.
I'd say the same thing.
The state, right?
Okay, so do you need a motion to accept the, uh, financial planning policies?
Yep.
Okay.
And at any point, I'm just to put it out there, we can open up these policies and any other policies at any point. In the next couple of weeks, I'm going to be bringing forward a yearly review schedule so that we will know what's coming and different select board members can take a look. It likely won't be at your next meeting, 'cause I'm going to be doing the forecast for the better part of the next two weeks.
Yay. Christmas forecast.
Yeah.
All right, I'd like to make a motion to accept the financial planning policies.
Motion made. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion, any questions? Seeing none, all in favor?
Yes.
Yes, pose? Motion carried.
Abstain.
Oh, 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 sorry. Okay. And one abstention. Okay. Um, upcoming?
Yep, that's just something I put on. It's not something that I ever anticipate reading. I just thought after the whole-
You're not gonna read it?
No, it's just there.
This is, forget it's there.
It's just there to be helpful and, 'cause after the giant financial policy debacle of a couple of meetings ago, I wanted to make sure that if there was something I knew was going to be upcoming, that I'll let you know ahead of time.
Uh, if I had any of the case, I don't believe we had any, are there any matters that are not reasonably anticipated by the chair to be brought up?
Yes. Um, last meeting I asked about chapter ninety money.
Yes.
Additional chapter ninety money that might be released by the state. You said you hadn't heard anything yet.
So the additional chapter ninety rule, no, I, it's still going back and forth. That's what I had said last time, too. It's still going back and forth in the, in the legislature. I have yet to hear anything. I had a discussion with Adam Chapdolane, the president of the MMA, this past week at the conference that I went to, and he had noted the same thing, that it's going back and forth in the legislature. The legislature is currently tied up by a political issue that I'm not really looking to bring up on the floor of the select board meeting, but it is-
Guns.
Probably.
Guns and migrants.
Yeah, that was the secondary one I was thinking of, too.
Okay.
They're, they're still doing it. We received our, our chapter ninety funding this past week.
Right.
But the additional rural funds are still going back and forth and with the different legislators jockeying for their share. That is one of the first things we will mention to new incoming state senator-elect Durant and Rep. Bertheum.
Yes.
Francois?
Uh, at some point in time, it doesn't have to be today. If you have an update on the reusable aggregation, that, that does have to be today.
Yeah. Yeah.
Public press questions. Mike?
Mike Stolff, I'm Lombard Road. I understand it's been a long meeting and getting late, but because this is both a safety and a winter prep situation, I would like to notify you of something that's been brought to my attention. I will limit my comments to thirty seconds. On New Westminster Road, there's a number of intersections. One is Musk- Muskogee, one is Bemis Road, another one is Lombard Road. Some of them have intersection warning signs. Residents have brought to my attention that the one at Muskogee used to have an intersection warning sign. It no longer has one. They should be in both directions typically, depending on site distance, the steepness of grade, the tangents and the radiuses that, um, affect the site distances. And therefore, these people are requesting that the board be notified that there are these deficiencies. They provide, they prioritize them as Muskogee, Bemis, and Lombard Road. Lombard Road already has one eastbound, but not one westbound. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
But you said that it used to have them now. Were these the responsibility of the state? 'Cause that's a state road.
It is not a state road, I believe.
Oh, okay.
I believe it is a lot-
Yeah, I'm gonna give it to him.
Yeah, we'll pass that on to them.
Yep.
I do have one more thing.
Yep.
I can second what he has to say, because I have to pull out of Muskogee every day.
I go down that road. It's, yeah.
And it is, you are taking a chance pulling out.
Sometimes, yeah.
Think you're gonna get broadsided.
At nighttime, it's not as bad, so at least headlights.
You see the lights.
But yeah, turns day.
And people are doing, up over that, no, forty-five to fifty miles an hour.
We'll have Travis.
Give us some information.
Yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Walker.
Okay, we'll do that and have it.
It's interesting you note that, because that road is notorious. I live on Brigham Street and, uh, it's very hard to see anything coming from the railroad tracks now.
Yeah.
Because there's this big piece of metal on the side, which is basically the, uh, the guard. It's a, it's a guard there.
It's good. Yeah.
Uh, and on the other side, there's a steel that comes down. It's very hard. And I believe there's a lot of cars that go not only beyond the speed limit, but there's no notice of intersection there either.
Yeah.
So can we apply that on the agenda for next week?
It is very dangerous.
I'm surprised nobody's going.
Information we can, Travis on that?
I am too.
Yeah.
It's scary.
It's a school bus.
Yeah, yeah.
Yes, yes.
Okay.
Well, he's saying something different. What, what it, what was-
Another intersection.
Hill, Hillgill Road and Brigham Street.
Yeah.
There's another one that there's, there's issues.
Yeah, that's a tough turn.
It's a very tough turn there.
Yep.
And it's very hard to see any traffic that's coming in from the Westminster area, because again, that, that, that chunk of metal that basically protects the, uh, it's the guard rail, basically. You really have no line of sight, uh, to any traffic that's coming in from that direction.
Okay, before, uh-
Just thank you, Mr. Chair. I took twenty-nine seconds. The rest of you took five minutes.
That's, hey, get out.
I do have one more thing.
Oh, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, earlier today, Mr. Ed Blanchard of the Hubbardson Lions Club stopped by and gave me this pin that they were giving to the different donors and people who helped with the, uh-
Pavilion.
Pavilion.
Pavilion. Instead of keeping it or put it in my office, I talked to Mary and Tony. We're going to make a small shadow box and put it with the key that they had provided and put it up somewhere in this room.
There you go. Yeah.
I'll hand that down, so it's a very, very, very nice piece.
I say for a, for auction, we need the funding.
Yeah, it looks realistic, too. It's, yeah, it's like really-
Yeah, it's a super cool pen.
It looks, I thought, it looks like a picture.
It does, yeah.
Yeah. Does it like spray brush or something?
Oh, oh. Really nice, nice job.
Well, yeah, it looks like-
While you're looking at that, before we adjourn, I'd share, I would like to wish the town, as people watching and everyone here and the board and town administrator, a happy Thanksgiving. Healthy, safe, drive safely, and we thank you for everything and all your hard work. So is there a motion to adjourn?
Yes, so moved.
Motion made, second?
Second.
Meeting adjourned. Thank you all.